Welcome. I'm glad you're here to watch this presentation even though you weren't able to attend live. If you would like to interact with this presentation in pair deck, the way it was originally presented, I have reopened the session. You would go to join pd.com and you would put in this code in the upper right-hand corner. O W Z O V R and that would allow you to participate in the session and write on the slides where there are interactions. You won't get a takeaway because those have already been generated, but you would have the ability to interact. We won't be, we won't be stopping or ending this presentation session in a long time. So if your teacher wanted to see it, you would be able to pull it up on your computer and show it to your teacher. But also just give you that opportunity to have that practice in a place that you could refer back to regularly if you, if you need to, as you learn how to practice the skill. My name is Kelly Self. I am a teacher at Hoover High School in Hoover, Alabama. I teach AP US Government and Politics. I work as a reader and a, I've been a table leader and a question leader for the national exam when it scored in the summer. And I am an AP consultant. I work with the College Board, training teachers around this country. And I work with A plus college ready, both training teachers and working with students in these study sessions. So I hope that you find this useful. Today's session will focus on the skill of quantitative analysis skills. These can be tested in both the multiple choice section of the test and in the free response section of the test. And you do not have to have any government knowledge at this point. This session was prepared with the plan that many of the students who might watch it would not be taking the government course yet when they did. And so we tried to choose stimuli that you could analyze and practice these skills, even if you didn't have any content knowledge yet. All right. Now I'm going to mute my camera and the reason why is otherwise I'm going to move it all over the screen so that it gets out of the way of the presentation. But I am still here and I wanted to show my face here at the beginning and I'll show it again towards the end. But in the meantime, I want you to pay attention and I want you to practice the skills. So if you have logged in through pair deck, you are going to be occasionally told to pause this recording. And that is so you can write without listening to me drone on while you're doing so. Even if you're not in the pair deck, if you are doing this without logging into the pair deck, then I hope you have a piece of paper and a pencil nearby because I want you to practice the skills. That's really the purpose of this is to introduce you to the skills and to give you some authentic opportunities to practice it for success. So if you don't have paper and a pencil handy, then pause me and go get some paper and a pencil or open up a second screen and log into the pair deck to participate. One of those two methods. All right. So my face is going away, but my voice is not. All right. So moving right along. In the Government and Politics Course and Exam Description and is divided by a lot of different kinds of things, but one of the things that they tell us, they tell us that students need to know about are disciplinary practices. And so data analysis is disciplinary practice three. And here's the way it reads. It says that students must be able to analyze and interpret quantitative data that is represented in tables, charts, graphs, maps, and infographics. Now you might find a variety of these types of stimuli depend within the same test. Okay. So in the multiple choice section, maybe they will have an infographic in one section and ask you to do something with it. And then in another part of another question on the multiple choice, they might ask, they might choose to give you a graph or a chart of some kind or a map even. And then in your free response, one of your free response questions is specifically geared towards quantitative and data analysis. And so you're definitely going to have one of these kinds of stimulus in that situation. So you need some practice with a variety of different types of them. And I would encourage you to look for this data just in your everyday life even. I know that I get bombarded with data when I'm on social media, when I'm reading the newspaper, you know, whatever I'm looking at, and I need to take the time and really analyze that data. So hopefully this skill should not only help you be successful on the skill for for this, this class and this test, but also in life. That's the hope at least. And it shouldn't be a new skill to you guys. I know that you, I would find it highly unlikely that you got to your senior year in high school without ever practicing some data analysis. All right. So moving along. Now each different subject matter test uses similar verbs, but not necessarily the exact same verbs. So the most common FRQ verbs for AP Government, and this might not be the same for your other AP classes, if you're taking other AP classes. But for AP Government, these four are the most common FRQ verbs. All right. The first would be to identify something. To identify means just what it says, you're naming it. You know, identify if it's, if it's a graph or a chart, for instance, it might be something like identify the topic of the graphic. You're just naming what's there. Now you can bullet point identify questions quite frequently, but I'm going to tell you that you should write a complete sentence. And the reason I'm going to tell you to write a complete sentence is because that really focuses you on your, on completing your thoughts and doing your very best writing and explanation. So it's not for the benefit of the reader. It's for your benefit to do a really good job. The second type of verb you, you will encounter is a describe. Now a describe question wants you to basically paint a picture with words. That way the, the, the reader of your essay, it's like they can see the graphic even without the benefit of being able to see the graphic. Now you don't have to get into things, silly things like describing picture, you know, the, the colors on the, on the chart or, you know, that's not what, what I'm saying. But you need to, to describe with a whole, you're not just naming it like with an identify. You are giving more distinguishing features as part of your description. Always writing complete sentences if it says to describe something. And usually you're, you can usually do it with one to two sentences for each thing you have to describe. Read the prompt carefully. You might have to describe, you might have to describe more than one thing. All right. A comparison requires you to make statements about each of the items that you're comparing. So essentially a comparison makes you describe the two things that you're comparing and then talk about the comparison itself. Now they will generally ask you this question in a context of saying compare them for similarities or compare them for differences. If they don't tell you which of those things you were comparing, my strong suggestion would be to compare both the similarities and the differences. Now compare question might be answerable in just one to two sentences, but that's not very likely to be honest. Three to four sentences is a better estimate and make sure you close the loop. Close the loop just means to finish your thought and bring it back full circle kinda to the beginning of where you started. All right. And then finally explain, an explain question is their highest task verb on this exam. An explain question will ask you to either explain how or explain why something happens. All right. So if you're going to explain how something happens, they are asking you for some sort of strategy technique, process, you know, they're, they're asking to kind of explain how it happens. If they ask you to explain why they're asking for a motivation of some sort. I am belaboring this issue because I was scoring the AP exam quite a few years ago. And there was a question that students were giving me beautiful explanations. They were writing three to five sentences. They were making connections, but they didn't meet the scoring guidelines and I couldn't give them points. And I was really upset over it, to be honest, the reading lasts seven days. And midway through, you know, the third day I was still, I was scoring accurately, but I was really kind of angry about the way I was having to score. And I centered and I refocused myself and it was like a light bulb went off over my head when I reread the question again and realized that students were giving me explanations of why something happened, but the prompt had said, explain how it happens. And so one of the light bulb moments for me was that I jotted down a quick note on a post-it note because I thought, oh no, I know my students know how to explain, but I'm not sure I made a really specific point about the difference between how and why to them. And so I've always, ever since, that was probably five or six years ago, ever since then, I make a big deal about explaining the difference between those two to my students. Because I'd had just, I had read hundreds of essays where I couldn't give students points because they didn't know the difference between those two. So I want to make sure when I work with students and when I work with teachers that, that you think about this. Explain how is some sort of strategy technique, process, that sort of thing? Why is a motivation? So read the prompt carefully. All right. So the first skill in this disciplinary practice is to describe the data presented. So you have a chart to the right. I don't want to point anything out to you in this chart before you examine it and decide how you're going to describe the data that's presented in it. So pause this recording. And if you're in the pair deck, write in the pair deck. If you're not in the pair deck, write on your piece of paper. Describe the data presented in the chart. Remember pause. All right. So how did you answer? Let's look at a couple of responses. All right. So this is from when we presented this live. This person has identified the topic of the chart and then they tell us that the chart is divided by party and by age range. Okay. Is that an accurate description? Let's look back at the chart. Yes, it is. So if they'd identified the person who say the federal budget deficit is a very big problem in the country today by selected characteristics. And those selected characteristics are age demographics and partisan leanings. Okay. That tells me what the chart's about. And it does it with, you know, and identify might've just told me the question that was asked. This tells me how the people that took the poll, how they decided to, to break down the data that they were collecting. All right. Okay. Let's move on. Now another skill, there's the next skill in this disciplinary practice is to describe patterns and trends in data. Now patterns, there's a difference between patterns and trends. Patterns may involve time and they may look really close to a trend, but they don't have to include time. The point about patterns is that they're going to be repetitive in some way that's measurable. So they're going to have it chunked down that something has developed that you can measure and see that it repeats in some way. All right. A trend is going to reflect a change over time. So it's also going to be measurable, but it's, you're, you're really kind of looking at beginning to end. Now that might be beginning of the data to end of the data, or they might tell you between this part of the data and this part of the data. You know, so for instance, on the chart on the left, which actually I, I have here to reflect a pattern, but it also could reflect a trend. Maybe they tell you for a trend, they ask you to look at information between September 2021 and March 2022. And then what happened over that five month period of time would be the trend. Okay. A pattern is looking for something that repeats here. So like we have a couple of times where something like spikes up, down, up, down. That's what you'd be looking for in a pattern. All right. Like I said, a trend is going to be some change that occurs over time. So if you were looking at a trend in that first graph, one trend really jumps out at me, which is that people that stay at the same employer tend to lose real earning power over time, while people who switch employers according to this tend to significantly gain in earning power, at least between December 2020 and March 2022. Okay. So that's a trend. If you look at the one on the right, the trend over time with regard to government spending is that federal spending has significantly increased. It's like more than tripled over the period of time from 2029 to 2005, while local spending has divided, it's gone down 75% from 60% in 1929 to 15% in 2005. That's a trend over time. Hope that's really clear. All right. Let's practice that. All right. So here you have a, a chart that shows you federal grants as a share of a state's budget between 1968 and 2017. So your prompt says to describe a trend in the data in the infographic. Put me on pause. Write it down. What is the trend you see in the data in this infographic? Do it as a describe. Now hopefully you looked for a change over time because remember a trend is a change over time. A pattern is something that repeats. So let's look at a sample. So here we have the first response, the percentage of state budgets being federal grants has increased over time. The second answer is a little better from the perspective that it like, it identifies the period of time. It gives you the start date and the end date. What would make it even better would be if it added these percentages as well as the trend, which is to increase over time. Okay. I will bring your attention to those blue lines. And if you look down low in this and I, I'm, I'm thinking because I'm recording screen, you can see where my, my little arrows going. Note shaded columns indicate recessions. Now I'm going to be really honest. I don't see an actual pattern in those recessionary periods. But let's say there had been maybe the, the, the federal grants as a share of state budgets tended to always go down or always go up in those parts that have the blue lines, which indicate recessionary periods in the United States. If that were the case and they asked you to describe a pattern, they'd be asking you to look at those little blue sections to, to describe that pattern. So that would still have a time element, but, but they're going to tell you exactly what they expect you to find. So just read the prompt carefully and then examine and analyze your data. All right. Here's one. I'm going to ask you to describe a pattern. And yes, you have seen this chart before. All right. What's a pattern in the data in this infographic? Pause the presentation and, and write it down and then start me up again. All right. Did you write something about age? I hope so, because that's the only real pattern in this one. Okay. There are, there are. I mean, I guess you could, you could go with, with a partisan pattern, but the only real pattern that's analyzable, you know, for you to do something more with is the age related one. So here's a sample. As the general population gets older, the Pew Research Center graph show a higher percentage of the older population think the federal budget deficit is a very big problem. So you've got, you can see that at 18 to 29, only 33% of the, of the, those who were surveyed thought that it was a very big problem. By the time you get up to 65 plus, it's, it's more than half. It's, it's almost 60% of those surveyed in that age range thought it was a very big problem. You know, you might have been tempted to look at a comparison of Republican and lean Republican and Democratic versus lean Democratic. You might've been tempted to find a pattern there. It would require a comparison though, to find the pattern there. You would have to be comparing, you know, that one maybe seems more concerned than the other. And I actually don't think that that's terribly true because if you look at those that are kind of, that maybe just say, I'm conservative versus I'm in a particular party for both. They have about equal amounts of, of concern about it. That part doesn't really give us enough information to, to really describe a pattern. Now the good news is the College Board is probably going to give you a chart that doesn't have this many sort of disparate points. But it's a good idea just to look at data and say, hmm, what could I do with this? Could I, is there a trend? Is there a pattern? Is there some of the data that's inconclusive that doesn't give me as much information as it might? You know, get in the habit of looking at things in that way. Right. So I did not mean to have that up. All right. So three C, the third skill, explain patterns and trends in data to draw conclusions. So now it's not enough just to identify or to describe the patterns or trends. We have to draw some sort of conclusion about the pattern or trend that we see. So I'm going to ask you to do two things with this chart. And you know, look at the title of the chart. The chart says percent who have a favorable opinion of Congress. So the question that was asked by Pew, two people in August of 2022 had to do with whether they had a favorable opinion of Congress or an unfavorable opinion of Congress. Now looking at the graph itself, they obviously asked them their political affiliation because they have been able to divide their information based on party affiliation. And they've separated that with colored lines for you. I do want to point out one thing because when we originally did this session live, some students thought that this was reflecting three days of data. They looked at August 19 to August 22 and they thought that was three days. I want to make sure you don't do that. Okay. So there, here's your markers to not, not make that mistake. First of all, look down there to that source. It says, survey of US adults conducted August 1st through 14th, 2022. Well, that right there should tell you that there's no way these are days. Because those, if they were, both of those days are after when the survey was done. Okay. There's the first clue for you. The second is when there's a little apostrophe between, before the 19 and before the 22, that apostrophe means you've replaced the same thing, like they've just taken off something from each of those that is the same. And so in this instance, we're looking at time. That means 2019 and 2022 in the same month. So supposedly you can get sort of some similar sorts of data at least. There's some consistency there. All right. So analyze the graph and then answer these two questions. First of all, identify a pattern in the information provided in the graph. Remember that is something that's measurable. It doesn't necessarily have to include time. And then explain how the pattern you identified in part A might impact voter behavior in the next congressional election. So we're, we're kind of drawing a conclusion here on B, based on the data in the graph that's been provided to us. Put me on pause, write your responses and then we'll talk about them. All right. So what did you find? Actually, let me tell you something. If I'd asked you for a trend, I didn't ask you for a trend, but if I had asked you for a trend, I would hope that you would have identified that over time, over this three-year period of time, the percentage of people who approved of Congress had a favorable opinion. For the Democrats, it remained pretty close to the same and only declined just a little bit. For independents, slight decline. For Republicans, slight decline. A little bit larger decline, but still not, not super significant. Overall, less than half of Americans approve of Congress just generally here. But I didn't ask you for a trend. Okay. I asked you for a pattern. And so you're going to have to actually, you can, you can look at these peaks and valleys. A pattern might include that for all groups, it lowers or raises at certain points. Let's see how students responded to this one. One pattern in the graph is that in the last three years, the Republicans have had a decreasing amount of favorable opinions of Congress. Here's another one. The Pew Research Center graph shows that Democrats and those who lean Democrats have a higher percentage of people who have a favorable opinion of Congress than the total population or Republicans. So the pattern they're looking at, they are comparing the three to try to find a pattern in the information. Okay. I would also point you to the fact that August 19th is about a year after an election. So the August, it would have been the 2018 midterms. This is like 10 months later. What do we think of Congress? Then if you look, you know, I guess 2020 is probably around here. August of 2020, we're right before an election. All right. That might have driven some voter behavior. Okay. And then 2021, probably around here. Okay. We've got declining support up here for them. So you know, maybe even though they don't section off these years for you very well, you can kind of divide it mentally in, in yourself and figure out where those breakpoints would be to look for a pattern. They'll probably give you some of those markers. I didn't, but they probably will. Now the second question, explain how the pattern you identified in part A might impact voter behavior in the next congressional election. I am going to identify a pattern that indicates that Democratic support raised was started out kind of low, it raised, it came back down. Why might that have happened? Well, you know, at this data point, the composition of Congress has changed. A new party took control. We have a new administration. So the executive branch is controlled by a different party. And it is, you've got unified government with the Democrats controlling Congress and the presidency at this point in time. How might that affect voter behavior? You see that Democrats are happier about it than Republicans. Well, that's because the Republicans don't have control at this point. So how might that in fact, impact voter behavior? You need to make some sort of explanation that shows, demonstrates an understanding that voters are going to vote in accordance with their, with their level of approval. You know, if I'm a Republican right now, I might be very motivated to, to turn out and vote because I hope that Congress would be, would, my party would gain control in Congress again to more effectively check the power of the president. Likewise though, this is an interesting thing. I mean, predicting voter behavior can be kind of, kind of tricky. Predicting voter behavior can be kind of, kind of tricky. Um, if I'm a Democrat, I might also be motivated. Because I might be worried about what might happen if the other party took control. But notice Democratic, um, favorability rates haven't changed tremendously. The overall total favorability right, rates have not changed much. It really is the Republican rates of satisfaction that have changed the most. So they might be more motivated to bo- vote. We won't know until after the midterm elections. The student responses says. Republicans will be more likely to not vote for those who are currently in Congress again. Okay, I would have liked it better if they had written it more like. Republicans will be more likely to vote for different people. Um, this was a little clunky, but that's okay, you're writing, you know, in a, in a hurry and you'll be doing that in, in May as well. You'll be writing in a time situation in a hurry, but do try to express your thoughts as clearly as you can. Here's another conclusion, Democrats might vote. Because they're, they're actually more satisfied and so they'll want to keep those people in office. This doesn't talk about wanting to keep the people in office and that would make this response much stronger. Okay, as it is right now, it doesn't complete the thought. And I probably wouldn't be able to give them credit for this one. Let's try some more. Skill D, three D. Explain what the data implies or illustrates about political principles, institutions, process, policies and behaviors. Okay, so you've got to be able to, to analyze the data and apply it to what else you've learned. So here we have a chart that shows presidential appointments to the federal judiciary. My certain demographic characteristics between two thousand and two thousand eleven. So we are comparing the presidential appointments to the federal courts by President Barack Obama. Who was a Democrat and President George W. Bush, who was a Republican. Um, and knowing their political ideology might be helpful to you, not necessarily for this slide. But for another one, alright. So using the chart above, describe one difference. Between President Barack Obama's judicial appointments and those made by President George W. Bush. Pause the recording and answer this question. Alright, what did you choose to describe? Hopefully, you used the data the way it was presented. Okay, this is actually a chart that was on an AP exam a few, a few years ago. And I will tell you that students that used percentages. Were much more successful in answering than students who tried to use numbers. Okay, you really have to carefully look at what the chart is giving you. So if you, for instance, had said here that Barack Obama appointed. More Hispanics to the court than George W. Bush. Well, we actually, this chart doesn't tell us that. Because this chart doesn't tell us how many people were appointed to the court. You know, Obama may have made a whole lot more appointments, for instance. And his eleven percent though, then numerically might be lower than what Bush's were. Um, so we really don't u- use the same kind of information they provide you. Now, if you'd said Barack Obama appointed. Twenty-two percent African Americans to the court as compared to George Bush's seven percent. That's using the data in the way that it was given to you. So let's see what some students said. Here we go. One difference between Barack Obama's judicial appointments and those made by George W. Bush, is, Bush is that Barack Obama appointed fifteen percent more African Americans to the judiciary. Than Bush did during his presidency. That uses the data the way it's given to you. Alright, here's another one. Barack Obama's judicial appointments were more racially and sexually diverse. In the way that fifty-nine percent were white and fifty-four percent were men. Whereas eighty-two percent of George Bush's judicial appointments were white and seventy-eight percent were men. Okay, we still don't know raw numbers of how many people are appointed. But they use the, the data the way it was presented in the chart, which is great. Now, this one is starting to move towards conclusions, okay, so be careful. According to the Alliance for Justice Table, President Obama hired a higher percentage of African and Asian Americans. This could mean that Obama was more willing than Bush to set aside race in terms of appointing federal judiciaries, possibly due to his own experiences. This may well be true. But, it doesn't actually tell me what, what was done in the difference between appointments. It's moving towards drawing a conclusion, so make sure you're answering the prompt that you're asked. Now let's use this piece, this chart again. Okay, here's a B, using the chart above, draw a conclusion. About how presidential judicial appointments reflect a president's ideology or party affiliation. Okay, so pause the recording. And then, start me again for me to talk about it. Alright, so what kinds of conclusions did you draw? I told you earlier, in case you didn't know, that Barack Obama was a Democrat and George W. Bush was a Republican. So, and you should, you should also know, if you're not taking the course yet, let me share this information with you. Presidents appoint judges with the advice and consent of the Senate, which means the Senate has to approve. The person that the president appoints or they don't get the job. Okay, so the fact that Barack Obama had. So much more diversity in his appointments than Bush. Does that reflect anything about the president's ideology or party affiliation? Hopefully, just from, you know, walking around in America. And listening to the news or advertisements, it is been election season and lots of advertisements out there. Hopefully you know that this does reflect ideology and party affiliation. So, here's a couple of choices, President Obama is a Democrat. The Democratic Party focuses heavily on minority representation in government. So as a Democrat, Obama is more likely to appoint minorities to judicial positions over white people. Okay, um, here's another one, and he, really Obama was the easier one to focus in on, on this particular chart. Because Barack Obama was an African American president, it was more likely for him to appoint racial minorities to government positions. Now, the only problem is, would both of these get the points? I hope you're going to say no. And the reason why is because, what did the prompt say? Draw a conclusion about how presidential judicial appointments reflect a president's ideology or party affiliation. The first answer talks about the Democratic Party and what the Democratic Party would focus on. That would earn this point. The second choice, it makes a factual statement. Alright, Barack Obama is an African American president. And it's a logical conclusion to assume that his own experiences. Might lead him to appoint racial minorities to government positions. But that has nothing to do with party affiliation in the response here, what if Barack Obama was a Republican? And an African American? Would he still be more likely? I mean, it, the prompt asks you to talk about ideology and party affiliation. So make sure you're talking about what they ask you to talk about. Okay, alright, let's try it again. Now, this has three, I am going to, I'm going to use this also to point out to you. That generally speaking, on the quantitative analysis FRQ. There will be four prompts and the first two prompts. You don't actually need any content knowledge to answer. You just need the skill we're practicing and you need to be able to read the chart or graph. And do what they ask. So prompt A says identify the topic of the graph. Now, where are you going to look at that picture? And you're going to look at the title, okay? B, describe a similarity or a difference in the views of Republicans and Democrats. Okay, so you're going to pick some data point on here to describe a similarity or difference. Or you might be able to take a more holistic view. Okay, either one might work. I will tell you that before you pick. Remember B, you don't need content knowledge, you just need to be able to read the graph. Look ahead to C. C is often where they're going to ask you to do a real comparison or draw a conclusion. And they might ask you to draw a conclusion about whatever you described in B. So make sure, look ahead so that you can make sure that whatever you chose to describe in B. Could be used in C if it needs to be used in C. Right, pause me. Write your responses and then come back. Alright, so I'm not going to show you a student response here, I'm going to kind of just give you my, my feeling on this. This graphic reflects American attitudes about appropriate immigration policy goals. And it's organized by party affiliation. So you should have written something along those lines. In B, you could describe any of the data points that compare Republican and Democratic views. Or you could do that more holistic comparison. And if you were doing a holistic comparison, what you should be talking about is that. Republicans want to make immigration harder. They want to have stricter rules about immigration. As compared to Democrats which want easier rules, um, about immigration. Okay, so you could have picked a specific point like increasing security along the US Mexico border. Or you could have looked at that overall sort of goal. For this one, if I were answering this question, I would have looked probably at that more holistic overall. Sort of trend, because in C, it's going to ask me to draw a conclusion. About these similarities or differences in their priorities. Okay, this one would be harder for you to answer if you haven't had any of the course yet. Okay, because you might not know very much about what each party prioritizes, for instance. And so, but once you have content knowledge, you would be able to do it. But basically, you should be able to pick a data point and draw a conclusion about the data at that point. I will warn you. Try to avoid going down sort of what I call partisan rabbit holes. It can be easy to look at something like this and think, oh, this is what I believe too. And really get kind of gung ho in reflecting your political opinion. Instead of kind of stepping back and analyzing it like a political scientist. You need to analyze it like a political scientist. And say, okay, the chart says that this is the Republican perspective based on those surveyed. And this is the Democratic perspective. The conclusion you should draw is similar to sort of that, that similarity or difference I did a little while ago. Which is that Republicans are going to have, are going to tend to support. Harsher immigration policy and stricter, or maybe harsher is a. That's a, um, loaded word, let me back up. They're going to want stricter policies with regard to immigration that limit immigration to the country more. Democrats are going to tend to like less strict policies. And will be more open to allowing more immigrants into the country. I made a mistake in my language, um, just trying to describe it to you. The real reason you want to avoid those, those partisan rabbit holes is not because the reader is going to care what your political affiliation is or your opinion is. That's not what they're scoring, they're scoring your ability to do this, to, to, to read the chart or graph. And then apply it to content knowledge. And that really doesn't need your, your partisan opinions. And from my experience reading this exam for quite a few years, over a decade. Students that start down the partisan path. Lose focus. And they don't end up actually answering the question. And so that's the real danger with that. It's not that anybody's going to disagree with your opinion, it's that you lose focus and you don't end up answering the question. And I don't want that to happen to you. Okay, alright, so I think this is the last, nope, there's two more. So three F says, explain possible limitations of the data. So it's not just enough, as we analyze charts and we're going to draw conclusions about what we see in data. It's also important to point out and look for any limitations that might exist. What's not here? That we might need in order to really draw good conclusions. Okay, so pause me. And you are identifying two limitations to the data provided in the map. Alright, I hope you're able to just identify or name two limitations, let's look at some of the samples. So, um, here we go, two limitations to the data that is provided is that it does not tell us what the revenue of each state is. Or the amount of people in each state. The types of federal aid, now that's just one limitation, but that is an important limitation in this actually. Another student noticed the year. They looked down there in the legend and saw that this, this map information was from two thousand seventeen. And it's presently two thousand twenty-two when I'm recording this, so that's a five-year lag. That is potentially, is it old data? I will tell you, it always lags by about that much, this is the most recent one I could, could find. Another per, another student outlining this types of federal aid, we don't know what this represents, quite frankly. We don't know anything about the demographics of the state. How large is the state? You know, what's the cost of living in the state or the poverty rates in the state, for instance? Another thing in here. And I don't see any students noticing it, but, um, you know, what's the taxation rate? This is expressed to us as percent of state general revenue. So, you know, if a state has really low taxation rates in the, within the state. Then their, their general revenue coming into the state. From within the state itself will be lower potentially than what they might get from federal, federal grants in aid. And as you look at this, if I was asking you to identify a pattern. I would hope that you could identify the pattern, that there are some regional patterns here, for instance. You know, a couple of your larger, um, sta- your states that are most largely reliant. Are in the southeast and actually even though, you know, your, your top state's Montana. And I wonder what that tells us about Montana. I don't know enough about Montana, but if you look at these, the, the gradations of green is goes up to higher and higher. The southeast tends to have a whole lot more than say the upper Midwest. There's, they get some of the least amount. What we don't know, I don't, well, I do know how much the income tax rate is in Alabama, it's five percent. Okay, and taxation, sales taxes though tend to be a little bit higher. But our state taxation rate is five percent. You know, perhaps in North Dakota, it's a lot lower, for all I know, I don't know, I haven't actually studied that. And so, you know, or Montana's not a very highly populated state, but Virginia is. And they're near the bottom on federal aid. Okay, why is that? The map doesn't actually tell us, so that's a really significant limitation. Here's another, explain possible limitations, so that last slide was. To explain possible limitations on the data. This one is on the visual representation of the data. So what are some limitations and how this is represented to us visually? So I'm asking you to describe a limitation on the visual representation of the data provided. And explain why that limits the information provided, or explain how that limits the information provided, actually I. I should have phrased that as explain how, not explain why. So pause me for a second. And then we'll talk about it. Alright, so on this one. Gosh. This is a little confusing, isn't it? Um, I mean, it, it doesn't give me way too many colors, but it gives me an awful lot of countries. And it doesn't tell me anything about any of those countries. Um, it's not like they're all first world countries, there's a mixture here, mixture here of first, second and third world countries. Um, you know, the question up there is with regard to vaccination. Um, majorities see vaccination as, as at least somewhat important for being a good member of society. Goodness gracious, there's no universally just um accepted definition of what it means to be a good member of society. Um, and that may be very different from place to place, so that's sort of a, a limitation on the data itself. Um, but visually, I think the biggest drawback visually here is just that it makes so many, it's, it's got so many competing comparisons. That it's hard to, um. It's hard to draw meaningful conclusions. Um, and the good news is, the college board isn't gonna give you something with this many data points. I would be so surprised. Um, let me say, I, I can't tell you actually that they're not going to, I'm not on the question committee, I don't know what they'll do. But this is an awful lot of data points and I'd be very surprised if they gave you something like this. Alright. Here's another one, now this is a little bit, this is a, this is a graph that's got some limitations, alright? So I'm, I'm gonna ask you to study the graph. And then you've got three tasks. You need to describe a trend in the data in the infographic. Identify any limitations in the information provided. And describe limitations based on the visual representation of the information. Pause the recording. And then come back to it. After you write. Alright, hope you have done your writing. Um, I cannot see, I'm gonna jump on to the, to the limitations. Particularly on the visual representation of the information, I'm just gonna jump down there to C for a minute. Um, there's a lot of really interesting information potentially in this graphic. But giving you those two different measures of focus of. Real numbers living in multi-generational household and millions and then the living rate. What exactly is the living rate, it doesn't tell me. But the, having the, the green line. And then the bars. And then also noticing that the bars, you've got 71, 81, 91, and then suddenly starting in 2001, you have every single year. I think that's a limitation because it's hard to focus on that information. Um. You know, limitations in the information provided. Um, if you look down into the notes at the bottom, my first thought, and I did have to look to the notes. Is that, um. I don't know, first of all, how common it is for people to live in multi-generational households. So this is trying to tell me that. But what exactly, I mean, are we comparing apples to apples? Or are we not? If you look at the, the first note down in the bottom. It says multi-generational households include at least two generations of adults. Mainly 25 and older. Or grandparents and grandchildren younger than 25. Okay, well, I'm gonna tell you then that I live in a multi-generational household. And my multi-generational household includes myself, my husband and two of my adult daughters. Who are both living at home to save money so that they can hopefully buy a house at some point. Um, and. Our needs and what this would say about us living in this is very different than perhaps. That other group which says grandparents with grandchildren younger than 25. I mean grandparents raising their grandchildren is a different demographic that would have different political implications. From. Adult parents with adult children. As compared, and this is, I don't think it's represented here, but even adult children maybe with their parents. Because they're taking care of their parents. You know, in my multi-generational household, all of us have a job, all of us contribute to the household in different ways. Um, and there's not a burden or anything else going on for anybody that anybody has more responsibility than somebody else. In our, in our scenario. We don't know that from this, so that's definitely a limitation in this information provided. Um, I do think this is really interesting, but you, it, you can describe a trend. A should have been the very easiest thing to do though. So your trend should show that the um percentage of people living in multi-general, many, multi-generational households. Has increased significantly from about. Three or four percent. In 1971. To about 17% in 2021. Now, I will tell you something I had to do as I looked across there. I had, here's another limitation in the visual representation of the information, so I'm jumping back to C again. My first thought was to look at the numbers to the left to read the percentage for 1971. And then I caught myself and I said, wait. Those numbers along the left hand are actual numbers of people. And I'm looking at percentage was what I was gonna com- compare. And the percentage is on the right-hand scale. So I had to really think. Because I started to say from 15% to 17% and I said. Well, wait a minute, that number on the left is numbers in millions. So now, and then we have the same problem, if I had said, okay, about 15 million people were living in multi-generational households in 71. As compared to, I would have been tempted again to use those numbers on the right, but that's a rate. So I would have needed to go up this scale and estimate about 55%. So from 15 to 55. You've got to stay on the right line, so there are some significant limitations in the visual representation of this data. Even if the data itself might be interesting. Um, and there might be some really interesting conclusions that can be drawn. Except the data is visually represented in a way that's somewhat confusing. Um, again, I would say that I don't think. The college board is gonna give you anything quite this confusing. But as you, as you just sort of walk around and react as a citizen in the United States. You know, we shouldn't just take all of, all of the visual representation of data that's given to us at face value. Without really analyzing a little bit and say, you know. What's the message here? What's the truth, what's the real information that I need to analyze and draw my conclusions about? Alright. I hope you feel better about. The writing part of quantitative analysis. Now, we also have, this can also show up in the multiple choice. And so I have three multiple choice questions for you. Here is the first one. According to the bar graph, which of the following statements will be true in the year 2060? And you can't read the choices unless you're in the peer deck. So listen carefully as I read the choices for you. Okay? Look at your data. Choice A. The percentage of those identifying as Asian alone will be less than it was in 2012. Choice B. Those identifying as white alone will remain a majority. Choice C. Those identifying as Hispanic white will be 31% of the population. Choice D. The percentage of those identifying as black alone will be less than it was in 2012. I'm gonna show you. How students answered. Okay, and that actually shows you these choices now. They may or may not be right, notice that they're kind of all over the place in how they answered. So look back at the chart. B is the correct answer. Okay? Um. Not because everybody chose it, but because they probably, a lot of them changed their answer when I told them. But that is the, that is the one thing that of these is true and is the best answer choice. Okay, cuz you're looking for a statement that is true. And that is the best choice. Alright? Yeah, let's look at this one. The table above supports which of the following statements about partisanship and the 1984 election? Um, now let me tell you. Um, you should try to. Use the data. That you're given, don't try to just jump to conclusions. Based on this, look for the best answer. It might be helpful to you to know that Walter Mondale was a Democrat. And Ronald Reagan was a Republican. Okay, and that's something you might not already know, so I wanted to throw that in there. Now, I'm going to show you the answer choices. Don't be swayed by how everybody else voted necessarily, cuz I haven't looked at this one, I don't know if they were right or not. But which of the following statements about partisanship and the 84 presidential election is best supported by this graph? Or this chart, excuse me? So your choices are independents were less likely to vote than were party identifiers. B, the number of strong Democrats was less than the number of strong Republicans. C, independent Democrats and independent Republicans were the two groups most likely to vote for candidates of the other party. Or D, partisan, partisanship was a good predictor of the way a person voted. Okay? Um, you need to choose the best answer, I'm gonna tell you D was the correct answer. And that is because. Um. C. We don't know if that's actually true. Okay? Um, but D, you can see that overwhelmingly. All these numbers are very high for Mondale on the Democratic side. And extremely high on the Republican side for Ronald Reagan. Alright? One more. According to the data. Both gun owners and non-gun owners. Um, and I'm gonna tell you before I show the possible answer choices. I want you, this is a good one for you to really look at. What? What does the title say? What are the things you're looking at? So the title of this, relationship between views on civil liberties and gun ownership. Percent who agree the specific right or liberty is essential to their own sense of freedom. So look at the data and if you need to come back and forth, you can. Here are your answer choices. Um, A, answered similarly regarding the importance of the right to own guns. B, believed that the right to vote was less critical than freedom of religion. C, chose freedom of speech as most crucial to their own liberty. D, demonstrated deep division between one another in most categories. Okay, so looking at this. Um, we can eliminate A. Because non-gun owners and gun owners, when it came to the right to own guns. Um, they were very divergent, okay, and that was the choice A was that they answered, answered similarly. B, believed the right to vote was less critical than the freedom of religion. That's asking you to look at right to vote and freedom of religion. And frankly, those numbers are pretty similar. Um, and let's say that was right to vote was less critical. Um, well, absolutely not, those numbers are higher than the numbers for freedom of religion. C was chose freedom of speech as most crucial to their own liberty. Um, and that is the highest number, it's the correct answer. Alright, but let's talk about D, demonstrated deep division between one another in most categories. Actually, that's not true, in most of these, the only place that there was deep division was on the issue of guns. As far as other civil liberties, there's actually pretty general widespread agreement, there's not a big range between any of them. On any of those other issues. This is, I thought this was a good one to include because. When we see that, we're automatically, particularly being in the South, we're gonna think, oh, this is about guns. And it wasn't really about guns, was it? It was about, about the data and about uh several, civil liberties much more generally. Okay? Alright, almost done, so hopefully, here's a proficiency scale, how comfortable do you feel about this skill? Do you feel really confident, you're a four, I know I can do this well enough to make connections that I didn't teach you? Are you a three? You think you can do it without making mistakes? Um, you know, just what was taught. Two, I, I know or I can do the easy parts, but not so sure about the harder parts. Two, with help, I can do some of it. Or zero, I don't know or can't do any of it, you are gonna crush my spirit if you have a zero here. Um, you're actually gonna kind of crush my spirit if you're a one also. Um, at the time, let's see, what did we get that night? Some people crushed my spirit. Um, and hopefully their teachers though are helping them because I don't have access to them. Um, but most students were somewhere in this two to four range. For an introduction of a skill, particularly when you don't have content knowledge yet. Um, I'm okay, even with those twos. I know that it can only get stronger, there's a lot of time between now and May. Alright, so I hope that this was useful for you. Again, my name is Kelly Self, I teach at Hoover High School. And you will see me in some of the other presentation, um. Presentation things that we will be doing. Um, I was trying to turn back on my camera, it's not letting me. But, um. I hope that you learned something and I hope this is useful to you and I hope you have a great day.